Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, September 11th, 2023. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on March 31st, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Rebell.
Here.
And Chairman Sayah.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Will everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence in memorance of 9/11?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Andy, can we have a swearing-in of the professionals, please?
He swears the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out.
I do.
Please state your name.
Jennifer Beam.
Charles Cunliffe.
Shari Spiro.
Your professionals are sworn in, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Approval of minutes. June 26th, 2023, regular meeting. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Mertens, Orozco, Ryan, Rebell, and Sayah. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Mertens.
Second.
Second, Barillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, you want to do a roll call?
Yes, please. Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Rebell.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, August 14th, 2023, regular meeting. Eligible voters: Barillo, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Rebell, and Sayah. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Cantor?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Cantor isn't an eligible voter.
You're right, no.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Start over.
You have an excuse then.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, all right. Hughes is making the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Orozco, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Rebell.
Yes.
Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Eileen, are there any vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Eileen, do we have any correspondence?
I have no correspondence.
Okay, item eight on the agenda, resolutions. Case number BA 21-28, Freehold Welding. This resolution granting use variants, bulk variants, and certificate of nonconformity. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Ryan, and Rebell. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Barillo.
Second.
Hughes, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Mr. Rebell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Resolution, case number BA 21-23A, Patterson Family Farm. Resolution granting use variants and amended preliminary and final major site plan. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Ryan, and Rebell.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Hughes.
Second.
Second, Orozco. Roll call, please, Eileen.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Mr. Rebell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Great. Okay, we have a couple of applications before the board this evening. We'd like to take the second application listed right now and move that forward if everyone's here. That would be case number BA 23-08, Keith Dubloy and Lisa D'Amore. This description is an application of Keith Dubloy and Lisa D'Amore as applicant and owner of Block 46, Lot 503, Newton's Corner Road, seeking bulk variance approval to construct a single-family dwelling with associated driveway on a non-conforming lot in the ARE2 zone. The existing lot does not provide the minimum lot width required in the ART2 zone. Minimum tree clearing is also proposed to construct the proposed driveway. The dwelling is proposed within an existing cleared area. The plot plan depicts a nine-point, an 8.5 right-of-way dedication. Exploration date, October 3rd, 2023. Andy, who do we have?
We have John Jackson.
Mr. Jackson.
Oh, Mr. Jackson. Welcome back.
He's back. I'm back. For the record, on behalf of my clients who are here with me this evening, we also have Mr. Mike Cannon. He is the engineer, planner, and surveyor. This case is really very simple. We've handed out a PowerPoint operation. We have a presentation. If you go to the next page, it's a very large vacant lot. It appears that it was created by judicial decree sometime in the 2000s. That's what the deed indicates. And it's three times the area that's required in the zone of two acres, but we have a very minor lot width deficiency of about two feet. The lots on either side of us are exactly 200 square feet, so we can't grab area from them. And we think that this is the quintessential C2 variance. What my clients would like to do is make this basically through the variance process a conforming lot, so that then when it's time to apply for a house, at that time they could meet all the requirements just like any other conforming lot. That's really all the risk to it. Mr. Cunliffe has a number of items in his review letter. I think I've addressed the buy-sell because we really can't because the lots next to us are 200 feet width. And, you know, all the questions in Mr. Cunliffe's letter, most of them have to do with, you know, sewer, soils, grading, drainage, et cetera. That would all be addressed at time of plot plan application. So I could have Mr. Cannon sworn in and testify if you'd like and go over that, but it's, that's really about the extent of it.
Jen?
So, basically, the lot, as was indicated, is about six and a half acres in an ARE2 zone, but it's like a bowling alley. So it's super narrow and super deep, so therefore does not comply with the width. They have provided us with a typical home.
Building on.
Square, whatever. So really, they're asking for relief for the width. They come in at plot plan and they don't comply with the setbacks, they'll be back. But generally, right now, they're just asking for, am I incorrect?
Yeah, it's just the under-width lot. It certainly not.
An undersized.
It's just the width of the lot. They cannot grab area from either side, as he said, and I would say it's more of a C1, hard.
C1.
A C1, not a C2. It's a hardship variance. They do not comply with the width, and they don't have the means with which to acquire additional land to make the conforming width, but they are three times the area.
Got it. Charlie, there's utilities, water, sewer?
So I don't believe they're in a sewer service area, so I think the septic system's proposed.
That's what your review letter said. Your review indicated it was not in a septic sewer area, so we'd need septic.
So, and we're just hoping this to be a buildable lot, right? They'll have to go through all municipal approvals as far as building, you know, utilities, road opening permits, all things of that nature. I stated a bunch of ordinance sections really for the applicant's benefit when they come in for a plot plan, you know, they'll have to comply with if there's any emergency generators, walkways, sheds, things of that nature. The one comment that I did have is just be aware of like major development thresholds, one acre of clearing and then not more than a quarter acre of impervious coverage. They'll review that at time of plot plan. And then, trying to see if I have anything else there. And then the last thing is contribution to the sidewalk fund. They're asking for relief. There's nothing proposed, so it's either, you know, they install it or they have to ask for a waiver to make contribution into the fund. That's a contribution. The only one that can waive that requirement is the governing body, so it's really up to the board's decision on whether or not you want to make that contribution or whether they install it.
We would request that at the minimum that be done at time of submission of the plot plan and permits, but we would, you know, in that area, I don't think there's a lot of sidewalks there. Mike, I don't know if you want to address that. I think it's a very rural area. The area will probably show that, and it's probably the appropriate spot for a contribution.
All right, let's get the professionals sworn in, then.
He swears the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and tell your line.
Michael Cannon, C-A-N-N-O-N, Cannon Group, PC, Brook, New Jersey.
Do you accept, Mr. Cannon, as an expert in the field of engineering, surveying, and planning?
He's got to put his credentials on the record.
Just very briefly, you're licensed in all three of those areas?
I am licensed in all three of those areas. I received my engineering and planners license in 1990 and my surveyors license in 1991. I've been practicing in those fields since then. I testified before numerous boards throughout Monmouth and Ocean County, and I testified before this board many years ago, but haven't had the.
What school, Mr. Cannon?
Excuse me?
What school?
I'm a Ramblin' Rock from Georgia Tech.
Okay. We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cannon, can you please just address the question about the sidewalks and whether a waiver would be appropriate? And also, please just briefly give your testimony about a C1 hardship variance.
Sure, okay. With regard to the sidewalks, there are no sidewalks in the area. Basically, they exist where new developments have come in.
So, you haven't been here? We don't really, that's not really the proof. The sidewalk has to start somewhere. So Newton's Corner Road is not a rural road. It's a busy road.
Intersection, yeah.
People do walk on it. I do not agree with the contribution. I think they should put in a sidewalk.
Yeah, we'll abide by that recommendation.
Thank you, Jen.
We will amend a plot plan at the time of submission to.
Include the sidewalk. Yes, great. Charlie?
I have nothing further, no.
Jen?
I take no exception to the relief that the applicant has asked for. I think the lot has existed in this configuration for quite some time. I don't think they have the ability to widen it, and it's not undersized. It's just narrow.
Understated.
So I take no exception to the board acting in the affirmative on the width variance that's been requested.
John, any issues?
None.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
Quick question, Mr. Chairman. On this picture, where exactly is the lot?
I think it's, John, it's further north, I think. Yeah.
It's like I took a bad picture off of Google Earth.
It's not on the map. It's north. But it goes.
That's what I thought, yeah.
To Easy Street. Right, but it's north of this. It's like off the map.
Okay.
Sorry about that. There we go.
That little clearing area in the middle, that's on the survey, so that's the area of the lot there. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm just happy they're going to put the house where it's cleared already, so.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, my question is, it says minimum tree clearing. Is that, because I really, just telling from here, I don't know exactly where that is, but where the house is proposed, it's not going to be much clearing?
That is correct. We will have to clear to put a driveway in to get to the house and any additional clearing in the front yard for any septic field.
So basically, you're just going to be clearing what you need to do and?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
And just to clarify, there is like some leeway for like homestead properties as far as tree clearing, so, you know, it's not like they'd have to make a tree contribution requirement or anything like that.
Okay. Do we, Andy, do we need to open this to public?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to open, Mr. Chair.
We got a motion to open to public by Mr. Hughes.
I'll second.
We got a second by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, we're opening to public.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public for any questions or comments regarding this application. If anyone wishes to speak, please come up to the podium.
Andy?
Hi. He swears the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Lee Wilken. Lee Wilken, 603 Newton's Corner Road. My main concern is just to make sure that when the plot is designed, that their septic system is not too close to our well, and that is the main concern that I have. Based on them building the house towards the front of the property where you don't have to clear the trees, it's very close. I haven't seen the plan, so I don't know, but it is our concern.
So, Mr. Chair, just to give clarity, obviously.
John.
Sorry. Septic is subject to Monmouth County Board of Health review and approval. They look at separation distance from property lines, adjacent wells, septic systems, things of that nature. So if they don't comply, Monmouth County Board of Health won't issue a permit for that, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You got it, ma'am. Anybody else from public? Okay, not hearing any, not seeing any. Can I have a motion to close to public?
Make a motion to close.
Cantor?
Second.
Second, Hughes slash Stanton, all in favor?
Aye.
I always, Rebell?
Yes.
We're closed to public. All right, so here we are. What's the pleasure of the board? I mean, is there any more, there's no more testimony on this, is there? Do you have anything, Mr. Jackson, to offer?
That's our case, Mr. Chairman. I think it's self-explanatory. We'll submit on the record. We're just barely deficient on a very big lot. We're hoping the board sees this essentially as a de minimis variance. Thank you.
And that's a C1, right? Correct? Okay, they're looking for a C1. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application. As our planner says, that lot does look like a bowling alley, and they're kind of constrained with what they can do. And as long as the septic tank is put in, approved by the Monmouth County, I have no issue with it.
Got a motion by Mertens. Do we have a second?
Take one.
We got a second from Orozco. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
C1 variance, yes.
Thank you. My clients, my clients, thank you, and I especially thank you for letting us go first. Have a good evening.
All right, have a good night.
Good night.
Stay dry.
Guess it's pouring out. The leak's not from the rain, it's from the air conditioner.
Okay, all right.
At least that's what they told me, so.
Just want to make sure the old Union Valley building is not leaking on us, right? Okay.
There's a lot of wire.
All right, we're ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Applications before the board. Case number BA 23-09, Diamond Towers II LLC, New York, SMSALP. Type is a conditional use variance, use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary slash final major site plan approval. Description: Application of Diamond Towers II LLC as applicant and JCPNL, First Energy Service as owner of premises known as Block Five, Lot Eight, seeking a D3 conditional use variance, D6 height use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary and final major site plan approval to conduct struck 170-foot-high telecommunications monopole for the above reference property. Expiration, October 6, 2023. And who do we have in here?
Hi, my name is Judy Fairweather, and I'm here on behalf of Diamond and Verizon.
Judy, and Ms. Fairweather, you're going to be representing the applicant, yes?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
And as already stated of the relief that we're requesting, Diamond is proposing 170-foot tower. My witnesses this evening will be my radio frequency engineer that'll explain Verizon's needs, then I'll have a civil engineer that will explain physically what we propose to do to the property, then I will have our real estate person from Diamond who will explain the towers in the area and how we can't use them because obviously it would be much better if we could, but we can't. And then finally, I'll have my planner, and I'm sure that when you're all done with this and you've looked at the photo sims, you'll see that this is a pretty good site where it's located in relation to commercial property, public utilities, and things like that. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to start with my first witness.
Hmm.
Unless you'd like me to do something else?
No, Ms. Fairweather, I'm just, you know, this is not our first monopole. I've been doing this for a couple of decades, all right? And the first thing that jumps out at me is 170 feet. Jen, we're limited to 150 here in the town?
Our ordinance, our telecommunications ordinance maxes out at 150 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm just putting that out there just so you, you know...
I understand, and that is, and we are conditional use, and one of the conditions we don't meet is the height of 150. And since we are trying to have this be able to service four carriers, we'll let the, I don't want to speak for Verizon RF, but what Verizon height that they say they need, in case it happens to be less than 170, we could also build the pole with the base in case it, the height is needed later for other carriers. So that way, we would comply, and you don't want another tower next to the tower we're building, and it may be able to satisfy everyone's concerns.
Okay, great. So do we want to get all of your professionals up here and get them all sworn in at once?
Sure, sounds good. I have a little army, and it's kind of fun. I travel with them all the time.
Andy, one at a time, please.
Okay.
You can step up to the mic. Oh, wait, Josh, you're back.
Brian Seidel, last name S-E-I-D-E-L.
Thank you, Andy, I appreciate it. Okay, so ma'am, who's going to be your first?
My first witness is going to be my radio frequency engineer, who was just sworn in, so David, I'm going to let you stand by the microphone, and please start off by giving your professional and educational background.
Excuse me?
And I'll pass that up.
If you want, you can sit, that is a mic on the table, just make sure it's close to you and it will pick you up.
Okay, you can sit.
Yeah, you can both sit if you want.
Do you want the exhibits?
Are they new exhibits?
Yeah. Well, they're from the port.
From the port, but he also brought the, just to put in the computer. I don't know if Yolanda sent you that or not. No, I sent it. They are current. I owe you, John.
Thank you.
Yes, or you could assign that one. Okay, there we are. Great. So David, please put your educational professional credentials on the record, please.
Sure. My name is David Stern, S-T-E-R-N. I am the principal and owner of the firm VCOM, V hyphen C-O-M-M telecommunications engineering, located at 2147 U.S. Highway 27, Edison, New Jersey. I've been involved in design and building of radio networks, including cellular and public safety over the last 40 years. I have a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering from the University of Illinois. I was with Motorola Communications in Chicago in their cellular engineering group, building original cellular systems. I was brought out here to New Jersey where I was director of engineering for cellular one for seven years, involved in design and build and operation of the cellular networks in central New Jersey for Comcast and cellular one and Philadelphia.
We accept your credentials.
I was just stopping him too, because he would have gone on for a while.
It's okay.
And I've had the pleasure of appearing before this board for many times, beginning almost 25 years ago.
Okay.
Okay, don't, please don't age us, I don't like that.
Can we just state what you're qualifying Mr. Stern as an expert in?
RF engineer?
RF engineering and radio frequency safety.
And radio frequency safety.
Okay, David, so can you please explain what the existing coverage is like for Verizon and what they need and what this site, if approved, will grant them?
Sure. Starting off, Verizon Wireless has the requisite FCC licenses. They actually have six licenses in this part of Monmouth County in the New York metropolitan area, 700 megahertz, 800 megahertz, ECS license and 1900 megahertz, the AWS license and 2.1 gigahertz, the 3.7 gigahertz license in C-band, and a CBRS license at 3.7 gigahertz. Currently Verizon Wireless has sufficient coverage in this area. By use of a temporary locate, they have a temporary cow, which is a cell-on-wheels, that provides coverage in this area, and that cell-on-wheels is located at the JCPNL maintenance yard just inside of Lakewood on Squonkam Road. That was a temporary facility that was allowed to be built by Lakewood during the height of the pandemic. At this point, that the Lakewood has let us know that they would like to see that go away now. When we have looked at this search area for the last couple of years, the target zone was the substation plant. Originally, we had looked at the power towers, we're going to have another witness who will talk about the power towers that line up along the Lakewood, Jack, Lakewood-Howell border, and in fact, we've been in front of this board most recently to start taking down some of the sites that were actually built on those same power towers over by Route Nine, and we got approved at the Athena Diner. So we're going to hear a little bit more testimony about the inability to use the power towers. The second location we looked at besides the power towers, which is a communications tower on the substation, also that wasn't available to us. We would have loved to have put this, the tower that we're proposing tonight, very quickly up at that time.
You know, David, we'll let Melissa handle that. Let's talk about Verizon coverage, please.
Okay. So without this temporary site, and the reason we needed this temporary site was the capacity. So we had a coverage, so if we can go to the next exhibit. All right, so we have in here, we have a coverage gap for Verizon Wireless. It's not only a coverage gap for Verizon Wireless, it's a capacity gap. At the height of the pandemic, we had a significant increase in traffic due to the closure of the schools, closure of some businesses, and the traffic in this part of the network increased significantly. We had made an assumption at, within the wireless community of Verizon, that once the schools reopened, that we were going to start seeing a decrease in traffic and not need some of the cows that we had placed there. We'd actually placed three cows in the area, but in fact, the traffic has actually increased over that time. So even since the pandemic, the traffic has increased, the usage on the system has increased and continues to increase, similar to what it was pre-pandemic, where we have this steady increase. The significant contributor to the increase in traffic, twofold. Number one, we've closed down the 3G, 2G, old-style cellular data networks in favor of 4G. So all of that traffic that was voice traffic, we call it, is now migrated over to the 4G and in some places 5G traffic. So it's all become part of the data network. So every call you make on a Verizon Wireless phone, probably AT&amp;T and T-Mobile as well, is a data call, similar to if you have your voice from Verizon over Philes, or you have Comcast, or you have Cablevision, and you're using the VoIP phone at home and not a landline phone from Verizon, that's going over a data network. That's the way the cellular networks are now today. So all of that traffic, all that voice traffic is now joined in all the other data traffic on this data network. The second more important contribution was 4G actually worked. In the previous versions of data on the wireless carriers' networks, they were okay, they were spotty, what you could get was pretty rudimentary, but as we built the 4G networks, we found they worked. The take rate went through the roof, so people began using this as the primary device, and this traffic, as I said, at the pandemic, really spiked, and we had to offload these sites. And what would happen is the sites around this area, including the sites in Howell, including the sites in Lakewood, were all, were going into exhaust, meaning they couldn't take the next call. So people who were on calls would drop calls, and people who were trying to make calls couldn't initiate calls. People who were trying to do a Zoom call, it was pixelating and you had no connection or there wasn't any data speed. So the idea here is it's not only a coverage site, it is a capacity site to enhance the Verizon network. Specifically in this area, we had on Lakewood Farmingdale Road going into Lakewood, it's called Squonkam Road, it's about a mile break, and East Kennedy Boulevard and just into Lakewood, we have about a mile of gap, Vandolf Road, which is the road on the north side of the JCPNL property, it's about three-quarters of a mile, Alzansia Road going towards Route Nine, it's about three-quarters of aisle, and Larrabee Road, it's about half a mile of gap where we have poor service. If you've been to my number of hearings, we talk about reliable service. In this case, the green shading represents Verizon Wireless reliable service. Specifically in this case, it's a minus 95 dBm signal that we're looking at, and what that, so why is that the signal, or why can't you use a different signal? This is the signal that we use in this area that we're trying to maintain. Why? Because if we go down a total of 20 dB, which is to minus 15 dBm minus RSSRP, then you actually see the call starting to degrade. So you actually hear degradation, drop calls, just from a high bit error rate.
And I'm going to, what I'm going to ask you, I'm going to interrupt you because the chairman said that this isn't their first rodeo.
Yep.
So, and no offense, but I don't think you need to explain wireless to them, but if they granted this application, can you show us what the coverage would be?
Yeah, next exhibit, please. Write it down, please. So this would fill in the area, basically from Route Nine all the way to about a mile and a half to the, what, of the east of the JCPNL facility. It'll fill in all the area it could reach within Howell and area within Lakewood, and it really fills in, it fills in the gap.
So in your professional opinion, we need this site because it takes that basic gap we have, both for coverage and for capacity?
Yep.
And makes it work in the Verizon network, correct?
That's correct.
And if they approved it with our antennas on, you also understand the energy output of these sites?
Yes.
So how does the energy output of these sites comply with both the New Jersey Radiation Protection Act and the FCC?
Sure. When you take into account all of the Verizon Wireless antennas and us using all of the, all of the frequencies that are described originally, and taking it as an aggregate over the whole property, and we actually use a height of 26 feet above ground level, it would come to about 4.5% of the FCC standards for a location like this. This is the general public standard, with 100% being compliant. Anything above 100% is noncompliant, 100 below is compliant, so we are 22 times below the FCC standards, and multiply that by five, so 110 times below the New Jersey Radiation Protection Act standards.
Mr. Chair, I think he showed that we have a gap, we need it covered, and he did it succinctly and wonderfully, and I don't have any more questions for him.
Okay. Fellow board members, any questions for the R engineer, the safety, our safety engineer? Mr. Rebel?
Uh-uh.
Mr. Ryan?
Yep.
Mr. Rosco?
Yep.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Martins?
No.
Kanter?
Sorry to ask a question.
Go ahead, no, no, no.
It's okay.
It's all good.
Just curious, does the, with the new proposed site, does that cover Ramtown, the Ramtown section?
No, it's too far west to cover the Ramtown section.
So Ramtown, it will still be covered by whatever's?
Right.
Doing it now?
I believe there's a site at the Ramtown Rescue Squad.
Okay. Yes, there is. Okay. Yeah, I know where that is. And I'm sorry for my ignorance on this, but does this service provide home internet service as well as cellular cellphone stuff?
It potentially could. I'm not the marketing person to know whether or not it will, but we are putting the technology in there that could be used someday to do that.
Well, I'm specifically referring to the schools and anything in the public. Would it potentially offer the, the schools the ability to have internet service without having a cable, I guess?
The answer is, it's a longer, it's a longer answer, but it's potential, but you would still need to rebroadcast that signal within the building, just because the way these networks are built today, it probably would, it probably wouldn't cover in-building all the places in the building. You would have to pick it up and then rebroadcast it in the building.
With a booster, all right.
With some type of booster or active DAS.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Marillo?
I'm new, these guys have been around. Can you explain quickly, like, what is a road temp cow site?
We have a site at the JCPNL maintenance yard, which is one-third of a mile down the road from here. So that is a cow, cell-on-wheels. It literally is a cell-on-wheels with a temporary crank-up tower, and it's weighted down with heavy concrete bricks to hold it in place.
And David, don't we use those for things like when COVID came in and everyone went home to work?
Yes.
We needed to pull them in for coverage?
Correct.
And also for big events, like sporting events, right?
Yes.
When they're expecting extra tens of thousands of people, we bring in extra coverage, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
They're a temporary solution, they're not a permanent solution.
And that's located where now?
About a third of a mile southeast of, southwest of the proposed location.
Third of a mile.
Mr. Stanton?
That is in Lakewood, right, now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, professionals?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Three questions for Mr. Stern. So the cow that is at the JCPNL maintenance yard, can you tell us, what was the height of that compared to the one that's being proposed?
It was 140 feet.
140 feet, okay.
That was the height we could put in, in the one-week timeframe that we're given to get it up, get it built.
Did Verizon or the applicant explore the possibility of making a permanent installation at that site?
I can answer that legally. We did not, because it was agreed that it would be temporary because it's in a residential neighborhood, it didn't fit. Like here, we're conditionally permitted use, there we're not, we're prohibited use. So it doesn't affect.
Can you just, if you're going to speak, get closer to the mic?
Oh, get closer, sure, I'll take that.
Thank you, honey.
Okay.
And then the last question, so, I'll try to beat the thunder, so the, you said you're, what, 4.5%, 22 times below the FCC standard?
Correct.
Is that just for the Verizon or is that with all four maximum-capacity carriers?
Just for Verizon.
Okay, what would it be?
I would expect as, we typically have similar bands, except for the fourth applicant, which is Dish, which has a much smaller band, that there would be approximately the same number, so if you were going to start multiplying, I would use that 4% number for T-Mobile and AT&amp;T.
So you're like still under 20%?
Yes.
Okay, there's no like compounding or anything like that?
No, 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 it's an additive. As you add each of the frequencies, it adds, it adds to that, to that level.
Okay, and then I think there was an allusion to there was an existing monopole on the substation site, and there was an inability to?
Yeah, Melissa, our real estate person from Diamond will address that, because she deals directly with them.
Okay, that's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Charlie. Jen, we're good?
Okay.
Okay, well, Mr. Stern, you'll stick around, right, in case we have more questions for you later.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, next will be my civil engineer, who's physically going to explain what we're doing. Josh, oh, there you are. Educational and professional background, please.
Sure, Joshua Potrell. I am licensed in New Jersey for professional engineering. I went to Rutgers University, received my bachelor's in engineering, approximately 15 years experience in site plan design, specifically geared towards these cell towers. I've testified before numerous boards, including this one. Last one was virtual, actually, for the Athena Diner Tower.
So I offered Josh as my licensed civil engineer in regard, and Josh, you?
Are you a licensed?
Yes.
Civil engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, sir.
All right, we accept your credentials, sir.
And then Josh, also for the record, the plans were done and the design of this was done under your supervision, correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay, I'm going to hand it over to you if you can?
Sure.
If we can go back to the site plans? It was in, it was in when we initially came up?
Mm-hmm.
Yay, okay. So Josh, I'm just going to hand it over to you to explain the site and what we're proposing, okay?
Sure. Site is known as Block Five, Lot Eight, located off Commercial Avenue. It is the current site of the Larrabee Substation, First Energy owned. So the, if you're looking at the aerial on the board, the substation is obviously the cleared area to the east. The Commercial Avenue is on the left side of the page, going from the bottom to the top. So, and you can see there's a little wooded area to the west as well. Several JCPNL transmission towers are located, scattered throughout the site, which carries the transmission lines, mainly along the southern border, there's three different areas where they exit the property, and they exit the property towards the north, northwest, and the northeast. So the applicant, Diamond Communications, is proposing to install a 170-foot monopole tower within a 50-foot-by-50-foot fenced enclosure. A new access drive will be installed off of Commercial Ave. Commercial Ave is currently a gravel driveway, which provides access to a, what I believe to be a tree business at the end of Commercial Ave. That's, so that the commercial building associated with that tree business is actually the color orange there on the left side of the page. As I said, current Commercial Ave is a gravel driveway. We're proposing a new gravel driveway off Commercial Ave, which will lead back to a 50-foot-by-50-foot fence compound. The fence itself will be black, vinyl coated, six foot high, and as for security measures, we're proposing a one-inch mesh as an anti-climbing measure. Inside the comet, inside the compound at the base of the tower, Verizon will install three equipment cabinets and 130 KW diesel generator, along with associated electrical meter center. The COVAX, the cables will be extended from the Verizon equipment through the proposed tower, which will run up to the antennas installed at the top of the tower. So as I said, the tower is 170 foot tall, the antennas will be installed at a centerline elevation of 165 feet. There is a total of nine antennas. Cables will be installed inside the tower. The tower itself will be galvanized gray in color. The applicant Diamond did request a aeronautical study from the FAA. The FAA determined that at this location, given 180-foot tower, there is no hazard to flight navigation. They further stated that lighting or markings of the tower would not be required, so there are no lights proposed on the tower.
Josh, what about lighting in the compound?
So the Verizon equipment will install typically two work lights, which will be installed pointing down towards their equipment in the event they need to come out at nighttime to do maintenance. Those lights will be on a four-hour timer, so, with a switch, so if the cell technician comes and fails to turn off that light, those lights won't stay on indefinitely. They'll turn up, it's usually a four-hour timer. The site, the cell technician visits the site approximately once every four to six weeks. It's an unmanned site, not intended for permanent employee occupancy. The only utilities that will be required is electric and telephone in the way of fiber, which we are proposing to extend from a utility pool at the end of, at the beginning of Commercial Ave.
Are there any signs proposed?
Yes, so Verizon Wireless will install identification sign that'll go on the front gate, in addition to some FCC warning signs, which will either be on the gate or at the base of the tower. There's no signs on top of the tower, only at ground level. The generator Verizon is proposing is a diesel generator with a 203-gallon tank. There was a comment about whether or not it will be designed for NFPA standards, and it will be.
And it will comply with noise requirements at the property line, correct?
Correct, it will. It'll meet the, the NJDEP requirements. The tower is going to be designed in accordance with the Telephone Industry Association standards. It is considered, according to that TIA, for short, in accordance with those standards as a category, as a risk category two tower, which requires a 119 mile-per-hour wind gust. So regarding setbacks, do you want to go to the next sheet? The wireless ordinance does require that the tower be setback at least the tower height from any property line. As you can see from this sheet, we're proposing 174 feet from the nearest, from the nearest property lines. So we do meet the setback requirements.
And Josh, we're not, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We're not proposing any landscaping, correct?
We are not. So the lot is wooded. If you move to... If you move to sheet, it's going to be, if you sheet SP-04, which should be the fifth page in the set. We prepared a Woodlands Management Plan, which shows trees, I believe it's greater than three inches? Trees greater than four inches. Actually, if you go to the bottom of that sheet and kind of zoom in to where the driveway and the compound are. So as you can see, there's a big cluster of trees kind of north of our driveway. And you can see we're kind of trying to avoid that cluster of trees. And so the driveway is coming in straight and the compound is offset to the north of it. That helps with visibility of the tower and the ground equipment. As you stand out, tear down the driveway, you're not going to be able to see that compound very clearly. We do indicate a couple of 24-inch trees, I believe, to be removed, that if we just kind of meander the proposed location of the driveway, we could avoid. So we'll probably do that. There's one towards the entrance of the driveway. And there's one towards the end of the driveway, which will revise the drawings to try and avoid those larger trees to be taken down. I believe that's it.
I think that sounds very good. I don't have any other questions for Josh.
Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair. All right, so a couple clarifying questions. So the lights that are on for security purposes, like what's the approximate mounting height of those?
They're usually about 10 feet high.
All right, and they're four hours, so they're motion detected and then they go off after four hours?
Not motion detected. There's a timer switch where it kind of you dial it.
Someone physically has to turn it on?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then the signage that's at the gate into the compound, can you give the board some like clarity on where the gate is located in proximity to actually Commercial Avenue? It's far, farther into the site, right? There's nothing posted on Commercial Avenue, right?
No, correct. So the gate I'm talking about is the gate to the actual equipment compound where the tower is.
So you're 220 some odd feet into the, right?
Correct, yes.
I had a comment in my letter about, I think you indicated it's the poles designed for risk two, 119 miles per hour. Can you provide some, what's the difference between ATC and ASE as far as like risk factors and wind and all the things like that?
So the wind, wind loading per code, it has to be designed for ASE 16. But if you reference the Telecommunications Industry Association standards, they have a table in their code describing risk categories for each type of tower. Let me just, I have a copy of that. I believe it's Table Two, here it is. Table Two dash one, it's Risk Categorization of Structures. And under Risk Category Two, it states, "Structures that due to use or location represent a moderate risk to human life and/or damage to surrounding facilities in the event of failure." But it also goes on to say, "Structures in this category are used primarily for redundant services." And it gives an example of redundant services such as commercial wireless communications, cellular, PCS, 3G, LTE, 4G. So that's where we determine a sign at the risk category two.
And then can you provide testimony regarding separation distance to like residential structures? And then also commercial structures or property lines?
Correct. So the, so the tower is going to be separated 174 feet from the nearest property lines to the north and to the east. 220 feet to the Commercial Ave right-of-way. On my other sheet, I believe it's, 246.4 feet to that commercial building to the southwest. It's 390 feet to the nearest residential property line. And it is, I believe it's about 415 feet to the nearest residential structure, which is on?
The west side of Spunkamood.
The west side, yeah. It's on, it's on the other side of the railroad tracks.
All right. So and then as far as the pole itself, can you talk about like the, how it's designed failure mechanism, right? It's not going to fail at the base?
Well, yes. So typically when these are designed, the base of the towers are the strongest points. And as you move up the pole, the pole tapers and gets smaller. So typically, the tower will fail midsection, somewhere around midsection, plus or minus. And it's a steel structure, so when steel fails, failure of steel is considered when it bends and it doesn't return back to its shape, right? So when it bends, it actually leans over. It doesn't fall at that point. What it does is leans over and it reduces the wind loading on it because there's less of a wind face, less sail on it. If it does continue to fail, it'll create a hinge at that fail point and kind of fall over to, on itself. So it, it doesn't shear off like a tree branch or anything like that. So when it falls, it'll kind of collapse onto itself. So when you hear the fall zone, it's not usually the height of the tower. It's probably around half of that potentially.
And in a worst-case situation, if it did fail at the base, right, you're 174 feet to the property line to the north?
That's correct.
And that D door to the adjacent property, that's, here's on the side of caution, right?
Correct.
All right. And a couple last questions. So you indicated about NFPA compliance with the generator. So is there any natural gas hookup or propane tanks proposed for that?
So we're just proposing diesel at this point.
Okay. And then there's three areas designated for future carrier equipment. Is each one of those going to have their own emergency generator?
Possibly. I know T-Mobile typically will propose one, AT&amp;T will, Dish probably not. But that's, it's potential.
The one that's currently proposed, is there an enclosure for like sound attenuation, things like that?
Yes, there's a, they call it a Level Two Sound Enclosure.
So would the applicant agree to conditions, should any additional generators be proposed? They'll have similar type of enclosures for sound attenuation?
Yes, Diamond will require that from them because they have to comply with NJDEP anyway. So, yes.
Yes. Charlie, what you're getting at is if you get one and then you add another and you add another, will the collective noise level of all the generators go above threshold, right?
I'm certainly not a sound expert, right? But my general understanding is it's not a compounding. Like if it's 65 decibels at 27 feet, it's not times four. It's, there's an increase, but it's not times four.
So, so if you double the sound at a stationary point, so if you have a 65 sound, sound level, you add another 65 dBA sound level, it only increases by additional 3 dBA. If you triple it, it increases another 1.5 dBA.
Also, the generators are run every seven to 10 days, you know, just to make sure they're okay. And, and during the week during business is usually when they're done because you don't want them running at night. And if any additional carriers come, you could have Verizon run theirs on Monday and T-Mobile run it on Tuesday. And, and then when they're all running at the same time, everybody's lost power. So that's real and that's a problem. But, yeah. For their just regular run testing, you can just stagger their days.
Got it.
And then just a couple more short ones. So you indicated the anti-climbing device. It's not anything mounted on the top of the fence. It's just the actual mesh size is smaller than your typical chain link fence, correct?
Correct.
And then I know there's note in the plan about it being black painted fencing. Does the applicant have an issue with it being black vinyl coated?
That's absolutely fine.
Okay. And then obviously, this is a lease from JCPN for the site, correct?
Yes.
So the applicant will be required to post removal and restoration bond should it ever be taken down at some point in the future? Believe that's a requirement of the conditional use standards.
Okay, the, the lease requires that from the carrier to Diamond? So do you require that for, the lease is a 20-year lease. Do you require that a bond actually fit for 20 years?
I believe so, right?
Yep.
Okay, we'll comply with whatever the ordinance is.
Okay. And then the last one, the Fire Bureau issued a memo about there being a Knox lock on the gate. There's no issue with that?
No issue.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Charlie. Jen?
I have a couple of items. There's some relief, and I'm not sure if you're going to address it or your planner's going to address it. Unmanned equipment structure shall not contain more than 200 square feet of gross floor area or be more than 10 feet in height. This is 300 square feet of floor area and it appears to be greater than the 10 feet. Is that something you're going to address or is the planner going to address it?
The planner will adjust the variance for it, but Josh, do you want to explain the need for the area and the height?
So I don't think we have 300 square feet. I'm not sure how you're getting it.
I'm getting it off your plans.
The actual equipment space or?
The, the equipment area is 300 square feet and the proposed GPS unit appears to be greater than 10 feet in height, which is not compliant. It's on page five of my letter.
So we have a four-by-10 concrete pad for the equipment cabinets. We have a four-by-seven pad for the generator. And we have about a, and, and the other is a rack, so I call that about a four-by-seven as well.
Right, but the compound is 300 square feet.
The compound includes the tower.
The compound. I'm not talking about your individual pads. I'm talking about the area. And this is all going to tie into the fact that, you know, there's concern about the overall height, which I know is not this witness. But you're designing this brand-new pole assumingly to accommodate yourself plus three additional users, requesting 20 feet above what we typically permit. You're also asking for area of the compound to be 100 square feet beyond what we permit. And it's because you're looking to put additional carriers on this pole that's not yet approved in excess of what we allow.
Gotcha. So let's take a look at it. Good sheet because we're actually looking for 2,500 to fit all the carriers. So I'm sorry, go ahead, Josh. What sheet?
Sheet, it should be the fourth sheet, SP-03. It should be the fourth page of the set. So the compound's 50 by 50, 2,500 square feet. Within that, the Verizon Wireless is proposing to install equipment pads. Actually, it's one, one sheet for the next sheet. Correct, right there.
Right there.
Sheet, SP-03, I think it's the fourth sheet in the set.
There it is.
So if you kind of scroll up a little bit, it describes the equipment pad locate sizes. So the equipment's on a four-by-10, the generator's on a four-by-seven, and the interior equipment is actually on a utility rack with two 18-inch diameter foundations, I guess. But that's probably about a five-by-seven maybe area, or maybe no. Probably like a, yeah, probably about like a five-by-seven area. So in, in total, the Verizon equipment space is only about 68, 35, is only about 103 square feet.
The dash line that you're showing around your?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that is their lease area. That's the, that's the area they're leasing.
Like you're arguing with me unnecessarily, say, yes, I need the relief and move on is probably the easier way to handle it.
I'm just trying to get clarification.
Yeah. So it, it, it measures more than 200 square feet and it's higher than 10 feet in height. So you do need the relief. I'm just asking if you're going to justify it or the planner's going to justify it. If he's going to justify it, that's totally fine. But I'm not going to argue over whether you need it. You need it.
I understand. I totally understand what you're saying. I agree. They showed the lease area. The actual area that we need is less than that. Josh, is it needed to open and close the cabinet doors and things like that? And for, I mean, the whole compound that Diamond is asking for fits all the carriers in it and it fits it around the tower. That's the standard of how they do it. I understand what you're saying, that the lease area is more, the cabinet area complies.
So mainly they lease a larger area to protect, to protect the space of the equipment. They need a certain amount of space in front of the equipment to work on. So they, they typically will request three feet around their equipment space just so no one else can go in there and claim that area and block access to the equipment.
Secondly, this is a major site plan, so you need a perimeter buffer, which is not shown on your plans. And there are provisions associated with said perimeter buffer, which obviously also are not shown. I would defer to Shari. I know that she went out there today to take a look at the area. You know, we're certainly not encouraging cutting down mature vegetation to put up a burn, but they do need that relief as well. In addition, you need a waiver to contribute to the sidewalk fund or provide the sidewalk.
Yeah, we would ask for a waiver for the sidewalk and the planner will go all over that, my last witness, just because it would seem silly to put a sidewalk there and where it's located. But we'll let the planner address that.
I would just say that this section of town has become occupied by a population that depends upon walking. And so we have required every applicant along this area to put in a sidewalk because there have been very, a large number of close misses where people are walking in the street at night, wearing dark clothing and have not, you know, been safe. So it's definitely something that we recognize and has, that section of town has transitioned to a certain extent. And so in many instances, we would like to see sidewalk just because it's safer for the overall area.
Okay, we'll look at the photos and the planner and everything, sure.
The other, Jen?
That's it. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Shari.
Real quick, while I was on site today, there's a, a gate area across Commercial Ave. Is that going to be removed for your site?
I'm not sure why that's there since it's a public right-of-way.
It says it's private.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I just like, you know, went under it. But yeah, I figured that's going to be an issue for you if that continues. Okay.
Diamond will deal with it.
Okay. And so like you had said before, you're going to choose to meander rather than just change the location of the driveway to miss the, those couple large trees?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, one more thing. You do have to ask for a waiver for, to pay the contribution?
Yes.
Fellow board members, anyone have questions for this witness?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ryan.
So I want to get back to the monopole, if I could. And I'm not an engineer, so bear with me on this. In one of the documents that was enclosed in the package, Sabre Industries is building the monopole?
So Diamond did reach out to Sabre to ask them to write that letter. So I can only assume that's who they're going to use to manufacture the tower. I don't know for sure.
All right. And you referenced, and they reference in the letter too, that it's a, a risk level two for 119 miles an hour without ice. And it drops significantly to 40 miles an hour with ice. Why, why the difference?
So 119 mile-per-hour is usually your hurricane winds, which happens not in the winter. So the winter times is when you get the ice accumulation. So what they do is they add, I think it's an inch of ice to the actual outside of the monopole and all the appurtenances, which increases its size. So, and then they apply a 40-mile-per-hour wind based on, you know, winds that you could expect during the winter time. So they, you have to analyze the tower for both conditions. And whichever one is worst case is the one you go for. But it has to do with the seasons, basically.
And would a risk level two encapsulate a Jersey nor'easter?
Yes.
Okay. And using the standard that was on here, I, I looked at the ASE hazard tool and they specify at 45 mile an hour. Is that different from what's proposed here or?
45 mile-per-hour with the ice?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, actually, I have the...
Or is that a general recommendation, and New Jersey's different?
I could be wrong, I said 40, but, uh, let me just look, I actually have it here.
Well, while he's looking, Mr. Ryan, as you, as you remember, Superstorm Sandy was followed 10 days later by Winterstorm Athena.
Yes.
And that gave us the double whammy. Yes.
So, no, it's, it's one inch of ice for 40 mile-per-hour winds.
At 40? Okay.
Correct.
And the antennas that are attached, do they have to meet the same standard, or they have different standards for what's on there?
Same standard, yes.
Same standard?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Mr. Rebel? Mr. Roscoe? Stiles?
I have a quick question. We mentioned the train tracks. How far are they from the, the pole?
I don't know if I have that direct measurement.
I'm looking at sheet two, and I see, actually, I don't know if I'm seeing the right thing here, but I'm seeing two sets of, like, train tracks.
So, uh, so Commercial Ave is a 70-foot right-of-way, so for 220 feet from the Commercial Ave right-of-way, we're 290 feet from the property of which those railroad tracks are on.
Are there other tracks on the other side? It looks like on the plan here, on, uh, sheet two. I don't know if anybody can...
On sheet SP dash two?
Yeah, S, I'm sorry, SP dash oh-two.
So, you have, so, looking from the tower going west, or to the left on the plan, the first darker line is the Commercial Avenue right-of-way.
I'm actually looking at the, the, what looks like railroad tracks to the right.
To the right? Oh. Oh, so, this, this sheet is split up into, I had a, we had to split the sheet up into two different sections.
Oh, okay.
So, this is actually the extension. If you look on the top left, there's a match line.
Okay.
And if you look on the bottom right of the sheet, there's a match line.
Okay.
That actually goes...
I thought it was weird. I thought it was weird there was two power lines, too.
Yeah, it's confusing, I agree.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
Okay. Just learn.
I think the Fire Bureau set, gave you a letter, right? That it was with, the only thing is, with the compound, I know Ramtown, the fire department's like five minutes away. The worst-case scenario, if any of the generators, anything caught on fire, is there like a sprinkler system contained in this compound?
There is not.
Okay. Is that something that we should be looking at?
John?
I mean, can you provide some testimony on what kind of equipment's in there?
Okay, so it's basically just a car engine. It'll meet the national, the NFPA requirements. We can give you documentation stating that, from the, the generator manufacturer, but we just typically don't, for the, it's a small generator, we just don't install any kind of...
How many KW is the generator?
30 KW.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, is that, is that like the norm for the other ones that are in this area that you...
Yeah, it's, it's very typical, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. The compound itself is cleared, and it's gravel and fenced, right? And there's no vegetation, like, overhanging or within proximity to that.
Correct, yes.
Right, and they also said there's not gonna be any propane tanks proposed for the generators, just diesel, and that was, I think, the hang-up on the last application that we had.
Okay.
And I just wanna follow on Mr. Ryan's comment, and he, he alluded to it, it was also in my letter, about the applicant providing a letter from NJ License P about the fall zone, failure mechanism. The applicant would provide that as a condition of any board approval, and then obviously, they'll have to get all municipal building permits for, for same.
Yes, we can do that.
That's all.
Anything else, Mr. Mertens?
I'm good.
Mr. Cantor?
I'm good.
Mr. Marilla?
One natural disaster we didn't maybe talk about was like, not that they happen around here, but earthquake. I mean, is it earthquake-rated, like?
Um, so, no, any kind of earthquake design built in is never, is never the worst-case scenario, so it's really just built on the winds, not about earthquakes. It's designed based on the winds, no seismic activities. They, they never dictate, it's only, so the wind is always the worst-case scenario that we design to.
Okay, I got you.
Mr. Stanton?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna take 10. Okay?
Oh!
Thank you. Eileen?
The board will now take a short recess, they'll be back at 8:26.
Thank you. Eileen, we're ready?
The zoning board will now reconvene.
Ms. Fairweather?
Yes, sir. All right, goodbye, Josh. Melissa?
You know, one, before Josh leaves us, Mr. Ryan pulled up the data on the wind at Randolph Road with the ice, and it's, does indicate 45 miles per hour is the, uh...
Yeah, with a concurrent temperature of 15 Celsius, uh, Fahrenheit, the 3S gust speed is 45.
Okay, I mean, I, I can submit something, I mean, when we go to the building permit, it'll show what it's being designed for. When I did it, I got 40 miles per hour. I don't know if we're entering different information into the tool. There's different categories, Risk Category Two, you gotta make sure you enter, there's also...
I did.
Different topo category, topo, topographic categories, so, but the, the final design document that gets submitted to the building department will detail what it's being designed for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ma'am.
Okay, Melissa. My next witness will be a fact witness, because she's actually employed by Diamond, and she is the real estate person, and I'll let her give her credentials. And you have the disc. I mean, you put it in an envelope, I'm very impressed.
Good evening, my name's Melissa Cook. I am the Vice President of Utility Site Development for Diamond Communications. I have been with Diamond since 2009, and I have been building wireless sites since 2001, so for 22 years. In 2009, Diamond acquired the rights...
Whoa, whoa, stop right there. So, I'm offering Melissa as my fact witness, okay?
As a fact witness for real estate?
No, as a fact witness for the hearing. She's not a licensed professional engineer or anyone, she is actually the real estate person responsible for Diamond, and she's going to explain the different sites that she looked at, and knows why we can't go on those sites.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
So, in 2009, Diamond acquired the rights to market and manage all wireless installations on First Energy assets, and I have been on the, I've been working with First Energy since that time. And that includes co-locations on their communication towers, transmission towers, buildings, and properties such as this substation. So, we'll start with the alternate site analysis, would you have us? We looked at, so that is, this, page two is an overview of the surrounding areas around the proposed monopole. Page three, so under the ordinance, we had to look at all existing structures, so, we did look for any existing buildings. There are no buildings within the search area that would meet the minimum height requirement for Verizon to achieve their network objectives. We looked at existing towers. There is an existing JCPN L telecommunications tower inside of the substation. It is a 200-foot tower. It is owned by JCPN L, and currently supports JCPN L's communications equipment. I did have a conversation with Chris Ford, who is the supervisor of network support for JCPN L, and our conversation, he explained that the tower would not be available for any carriers Verizon, for anyone else, because there is no ground space available within that substation. It's very crowded, and they, First Energy did not have the space to allow for the ground equipment. And I did include a copy of the email confirming that conversation. Next, we looked at the exist, there are two types of transmission towers on this property. The first is the steel pole electrical transmission towers. For co-location on transmission, First Energy requires that the wireless equipment be installed above the top of the transmission tower, with all cables running inside the pole to ensure the safety and unencumbered access of JCPN L's linemen during normal maintenance or emergency situations. So, wireless installation on a steel pole transmission tower requires the tower be designed with portholes at the top and bottom, to allow for the carrier's cables to route inside the tower. It would also require a flange at the top of the tower to allow for a 15-foot pipe extension on which the carrier's antenna platform would be connected. Because these towers were not designed with that criteria, the steel pole transmission towers will not support wireless equipment, and are not available for Verizon. There are also six lattice-style transmission towers, and those are all to the south in those yellow circles. Now, while lattice towers typically are very good for co-location by wireless carriers, as they meet First Energy's criteria, these transmission towers are governed by the National Electrical Safety Code, and over the years, just like with building codes, those, those codes changed. And due to those changes, these six transmission towers are not able to support any new wireless loading, as the existing structural capacity is reserved for the electrical infrastructure. So, these towers are not available for co-location by Verizon. We had, we did have a similar situation with transmission towers to the west on this same transmission line, as Mr. Stern had indicated. Verizon and AT&amp;T were installed on two different JCPN L transmission towers, and while their existing loading was grandfathered, they were not able to upgrade their site, and that is why the board had approved a new monopole at 6825 Route 9, the site we call Athena Diner.
Correct. Yeah.
Yes. So, those are my alternate sites that we looked at.
What about municipal sites?
That would be the second handout.
Oh, I didn't hand out the second, I was bad. I'm so sorry. Go ahead, you can talk, we'll hand out.
Oh, wait, there is, that is on the USB drive.
Thank you.
Is, is this the slide, or is there another slide?
No, there's another file on the USB.
And the...
It should state Howell Township Properties.
That's good for the fireplace.
They're being introduced tonight as a result of comments.
So, this first page represents the tax map, the overall tax map for Howell Township. You can see the proposed monopole location is located on the map here, it is on the right-hand side, but that is on the southern side of Howell Township. So, we looked at township properties that were located within Key Map Three. So, if you go to the next page, under slide, this is Key Map Three, and you can see the proposed monopole is located at the bottom of the, of the page, towards the border of Lakewood Township. And we looked at parcels located within Key Map 3.01, and 3.08, and 3.07, being the closest to the, the proposed location. Then the next slide is, this is tax map sheet 3.01, which is Block Five. There are seven properties within Block Five that are owned by Howell Township. Six of the lots are too small to provide the required setbacks, and Lot 19, which would be the seventh, is located in wetlands, and would be limited to any development.
One second, please.
Yes.
So, Jen, the cornerstone property is in this area, correct?
Yes.
And it's 16 acres?
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, the township recently purchased a significant piece of property where Oakland, Lakewood, Farmingdale Road, and Randolph all converge, and Brook right there.
Right where it says sheet 123, that's the property.
Was it, what, what money was it purchased with? Was it...
Bonded for it.
Wasn't green acres, or any...
I don't think it was green acres, I think they bonded for it.
Yeah.
And also, when was the application filed?
The application was filed back in, probably before.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm sure it was before. That was, that's May.
Melissa, I just wanna make sure that your testimony matches the current situation, not what you had before.
Right. So, Melissa, when you started down this road at least a year and a half ago, forget the testimony, tonight, when you started down this road a year and a half ago, for the record, these properties were not bought by the township, nor owned by the township. So, the record's clear.
Right.
Thank you.
So, continuing on, so those are the properties within Block Five on sheet 3.01. The next is, she, tax map 3.07, and we're looking at Block 19, Lot 15. Obviously, this is an extremely small parcel that would not provide the required setbacks. And you can see the proposed monopole location is off to the right. And then the last sheet is tax map sheet 3.08, which includes a variety of different blocks. The properties owned by Howell Township are all within Block 14, lots eight, 13, 14, and 15, and the proposed monopole tower would be actually off the right side of the paper. But you, I did highlight the existing Verizon site located at, at the Athena Diner monopole on Block 14, Lot 31.01. So, these properties would be too close to an existing site.
Thank you.
And then the other, the remaining pages are just the documentation of the properties owned by Howell Township. So, Melissa, when Verizon contacted you all and needed a tower, a height of 170, or a height of 170, there were no existing, bottom line of this, there are no existing towers for them to go on, in their searching. Not that were available to Verizon.
Yes, right, not to go on, I meant available. Okay, great. I don't have any other questions, Rebecca.
Yes, but just because, you know, there wasn't then, there is now, so, you know, we'd like that to be explored as well.
Well, David should probably, should probably weigh in on this. Okay, we'll let him weigh in. We'll, we'll keep talking about it. How about that with my next witness?
That's good, okay.
All right.
Melissa, thank you.
Thank you.
Unless the board members had any questions for her. Okay, thank you.
Paul, real quick, just, just in that same vein of, of current information, I would ask that you check with the transmission tower companies, I know a lot across the state, they're moving away from the lattice towers and putting up monopoles. I see them going up all over the place, because of capacity issues. Is there any plans for these to be replaced in the near future with higher-capacity monopoles, or was that due diligence done to reach out to them and see if there's any projects in the works like that, that would support your antennas?
Great question. Yes, great question. I talk with First Energy every week, and one of our first questions to... And one of our first questions to FirstEnergy when we submit a request for any site is to check and see if there's any plans for the transmission line to be replaced. There are no plans for this transmission line to be replaced.
Jen?
So I want you to talk a little bit about this 170-foot height. You know, so we asked a question, what height is the temporary? Is the temporary antenna in Lakewood, it's 140 feet. How tall is the pole at the Athena Diner site?
150.
150 feet. So I want to understand why the board is being asked to grant relief 20 feet over what we allow when poles in the area are compliant. So especially that temporary pole is even lower than 150 feet and seem to provide that gap in coverage.
Okay, we're going to go back to discuss that now. That sounds fine. We're going to go back to David because Melissa secures the real estate and it's still pursuant to the carrier's needs. So that's back to David. So Melissa, thank you very much.
Sure.
We're going to toss you out and bring David back.
Yes.
I most certainly do. What is that? Is that the, is that what you wanted to say?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay, let's just give him a second. And just so you know, what he'll be speaking to is, is he's looking at the VCOM report that he submitted to the board regarding the coverage.
This is on page 12 of 22, 13, 14, and 15. I remember sitting at the zoning office here for about eight hours going through every single application and making sure I got every single site that had been approved at that point and trying to make sure I keep this up to date, this listing that's up to date. I would agree that most of the sites are 150 feet or lower, but there are some exceptions scattered around town that we've used, we've used taller towers. And I did misspeak before, the temporary tower over at the JCPenel Maintenance Yard, the top of that tower is 153 feet. It was not 140, it was 153 feet.
So David, okay, we understand some towers are 150 feet, some are a little bit higher, some are a little bit shorter. Why 170 feet? Tell us about Verizon's needs.
All right. So the, the goal of this site, as I described before, is not just the, the RF gap that I described, it's a capacity site. And I'm trying to replace what I had in, at the FirstEnergy site. So I am trying to make sure that I have sufficient coverage to cover all my capacity. And capacity is not only, it's, it's all the sites in the area. So I am trying to make sure I have the overlap on those sites that I have today, ensure capacity. As I, as I move away from certain sites, then those sites pick up the traffic that I'm leaving behind. So the goal here is to replace that temporary site and ensure that I have enough overlap that I pick up all the capacity that, that I had before. The optimal height is 170 feet, gives me back the, the replacement in capacity from a coverage. We call that, we would call that a best server. So if you look at it from, from a, from a, from a picture standpoint, it's the best server, meaning which site is covering you the best. Best would be not just the RF coverage, but best quality. As I tell people, sometimes the best quality site may be a little further from you, but it's in front of you and you can see it because the closer site is on the other side of the building you're in and you've got a lot of building in between you and the closer site. So I'm trying to replace it to make sure I've got good coverage and good capacity and offloading all the other sites in this area. So that's the, the optimal location with, the optimal height would be the 170 to give that, to give that coverage and that capacity. That would be the optimal.
Mr. Chair, I had two questions for Mr. Stern. So did you run any analysis with the same equipment at 150 feet to show what does the map look like?
It's going to look just like that. It's going to, if, if you go back, go back up one slide, that's not a big gap, as I told you. From RF coverage standpoint only, that's not a big gap. I go 150 from 170, 150, next map, next slide, please. It looks the same.
Wait, the white, I, I'm confused. It's that map?
So this map will look almost the same. There'll be a little bit more white shading at the very edges.
Go ahead, walk up.
So, so the map would, so you're telling me you could get the same coverage with the pole at 150 feet versus 170 feet?
So for the record, because I have a court reporter here, let's first declare, let's make sure we're talking about the, the correct page number.
Can I come over to the side of the?
Come right here.
No, I mean, I want to come up to the map to show that I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, you have to do that.
Do that.
No, no, you got it. Yeah, they got it.
Okay, so let's make it for the record. So what page is that? The court reporter needs to know what we're all talking about.
So originally, so this sheet was identified as AT&amp;T. It's 506.
It's on the screen now?
Good. So by drinking the site, so if I run this thing, if I run the site at 150 feet instead of 170 feet, as asked, what you'll see is more white show up in this area. So this is the area to the north, northwest of the site, you'll see more white here than green. You'll also see a little bit more white to the east in the areas to the east of the JCPenel property. That's the difference. It's not, as I said, the RF gap is not big. The issue was capacity.
This is map four?
Five.
Slide, slide it, slide it up a little bit.
Five oh six.
This is map four from the RF report. It's sheet five.
And that's showing at your 170 feet, that's your request?
Yeah.
And what's 150?
150 is going to look almost identical to this, except you're going to have a little bit more white in here. As I said, the big, if you go, let's go back up to the page four. Slide up. The gap here is approximately a mile, mile and a half east to west, mile this way, mile and a half this way. So at 150 feet, I fill that gap. So RF coverage-wise, I fill the gap, just as I would at 170. What I'm trying to do is build more overlap to the, to the south and to the north to make sure I offload the existing sites that were providing coverage and got crushed when the pandemic hit and I didn't have enough capacity in the system. So, and as I said in the very beginning, when we introduced this site, we, 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 we fixed the problem. We fixed the coverage problem, we fixed the capacity problem because we had so much usage on the network. The network basically crippled in this area. This area became as big a producer of usage on the network as Center City, Philadelphia. So this became a huge, this whole area became a huge part of our network as far as the traffic goes. So we installed a number of cell-on-wheels in this area to offload the network and give more life to the sites that are around it, including the Howell sites, including the new one we just built at Athena Diner, as well as Howell Four, which is on, which is one of the sites that actually could do a power tower slightly. So we did that on the transmission tower there.
So, and just to clarify too, right, so there's RF coverage and then there's capacity. So you're saying at the perimeter, right, you're going to, you still could get a call, but like you're going to, you might have more drop calls as more calls come in on the fringes of that?
Yeah, on the fringes of this. So it's, so the coverage is going to go back, but within the good coverage, as you shrink it, then I don't have it providing additional coverage and capacity in some of these areas. That's the issue. So it's, it's, it's life, it's, it's life enhancement by adding more capacity to the network. You're taking, you're, you're, you're moving a little bit away a little bit. Will the site work? Of course the site's going to work at 150, but optimally, 170 gets me back to where I was with the temp site.
Can I ask you one more question while you're up here?
Yeah.
These two sites here, Howell Four and North Lakewood relocation, was there any way to add antennas or increase the antenna sizes to get that overlap in the middle here to negate the need for the extra monopole here? As you were saying before, you're 22 times below the radio wave output. And I would imagine that these other sites were built similarly with that buffer. Is that a fair statement? So could you just, could you add larger antennas or more antennas to these to up the frequency? And maybe only have like 15 times the, you know, the requisite level, which is still very safe, but that way you wouldn't need a new monopole to try and close this gap?
That's a great question. In the technology that we use today on the wireless network, we put in the best technologies because the link of this system isn't the downlink, tower to radio. The problem is radio to tower. I can't make these any stronger. That FCC requirement say you can only do X, and I'm pointing, I'm holding up a cell phone. You can only do X with this radio, period. For, for all the safety issues, for everything else, I can only do X with that radio. So I already put at all these sites, and you see in all these little boxes go up with all these little cables coming out of it, these are tower amplifier amplifiers that go up to boost, to suck out every piece of energy that it's getting from there. It's already there. All these sites already have that. We've got all the upgrades. Melissa spoke about some of the towers that we couldn't use because we couldn't put that stuff on some of these power towers. They couldn't handle it. We, we, she said, we, some of these sites were grandfathered in with the old technology. The old technology had no amplification up on top. The new sites we're doing today, a lot of the radio gear that used to be on the ground is built into the antennas and built into the, into the little boxes you see behind those antennas.
Are there, what are the heights of those Howell Four? Like, is there the potential, are they below the 150-foot marker enough that you could still put an extension on them to get more room for those boosters? The Howell Four in the North Lakewood?
This one's already 150. That's a 150. We built that at Lakewood. I don't remember Howell Four. I have it in my notes right there. Any other questions while I'm up here?
Mr. Stern, you know, when technology was developing, right, my understanding in the industry was that monopoles were going to become less and more mini-stations and support and repeaters were going to be the future. How is that developing?
Another great question. We looked at the technology over the last 20 years and we talked about, I remember seeing the guy, oh, but you're going to need a cell site and a Rubik's Cube. That's all you're going to have. Put this up on a telephone pole and that's all I need. So the new technology we're talking about, we're deploying some of that, that type of stuff in the cities, on the campus networks, small cells. And that's the very high frequency stuff. It doesn't go very far. So you're talking about needing a lot of above-ground infrastructure, what's called street furniture, to carry all this stuff. And all of it needs to have fiber to it. It all needs to be out there. But all of it's going to need some kind of approval to get through all of that. So you're talking, let's talk 50 years in the future now. You have all this technology, but all that stuff's going to come through to get, to get approved. And it's going to be in people's front yards. Every one of these sites is going to be in somebody's front yard or in somebody's backyard if you have telephone poles running down the backyard. So that all, that all, that, that could come. Most of the stuff we're doing today with the high-frequency stuff, high-capacity cable internet replacement is in places where I have the ability to put in lots of these small cells in, in, in a given area. You know, you're talking, in, in New Jersey, you're talking like a Jersey City or, or parts of Brooklyn and parts of Manhattan. You know, I can't put these things on top of skyscrapers in Manhattan, but maybe I could put it in neighborhoods with four, three and four-story buildings.
Got it.
One last, one last thing, real quick.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Oops, sorry. The caller pointed in here.
She got it.
Yes. Just to clarify, the white areas there, is that absolutely no service or is that just diminished capacity in those areas? Like, can you, you're, you're not going to be in a dead zone there. Can you still pick up calls? Or is it just?
Great question. Excellent question. It is, it is the in-building coverage that we're designing to. So that was part, and part of that discussion I was doing about the DBs, we're designing to the in-building coverage. So if you're walking around out here, for the most part, you have coverage. Capacity, it's, you're, it's, you're, you're going to have the coverage. Capacity is really here. That's where the capacity issues are, where you have population. That's what's, that's where you're going to see the capacity hits. Out here in the rural area, we've really got nothing and you have, the only impediment is trees, which is also not a great thing for, for the side yard. Trees love to absorb RF, except in the winter when the leaves come down, it's not a problem.
And the capacity you're talking about, is that present-day capacity or are you projecting out future potential capacity?
No, this is today.
It's like staging, I'm thinking.
No, this is today. This is today. If I remove this site and don't replace it, I have a massive capacity hole in northern Lakewood and in southern Howell Township. Massive capacity hole. This site is carrying a lot of traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Board members, any questions for?
Mike asked a question those days.
Mr. Brule?
Thank you for what they were talking about.
Yeah, I'm still with, I'm still a little hung up on, so this map four is, is showing your coverage with 170-foot monopole.
Yes.
What would be helpful to me, I'm a visual person, is what would this look like at 150 feet? Would you be able to present that to us?
I could, but I tried to describe.
I know, and your description was good, you know, not really understanding a lot of what you said, but for visual purposes, at 150, what is, how much of a difference are we talking about visually? If that could be presented?
Not a lot.
I think he said that the white area near where it says maximum Southern Road would be increased. No, go to the next one down. So the white area that you're seeing in the middle of the screen, that would expand a bit. And then the white area on the right side of the screen would expand a bit at 150 feet. He like, he walked us through it with his finger before.
And the issue is the capacity. The coverage would be there and, and it would, it would just be a little different, but his whole explanation of the capacity is the real reason for the 170 feet. But can you stand and make a call if you're in an off hour and there aren't a lot of telephones on? He said, sure, you could. But when everybody's using it and, and that was, and as he explained, when COVID came, he thought, everybody thought it was going to go away. They put up temporary towers and it didn't go away.
So just, just to reinforce what I'm saying, when the capacity issues are here, what happens to the coverage, that green, is the green actually shrinks. You actually shed traffic off of the network. So as, as the, the subscribers who are on the network and have the lowest quality of service, they will get shed first. So if their bit error rate is, is, is just below the fringe, as that capacity goes, the next subscriber comes, the next subscriber comes, that bit error rate goes higher, it drops the call. The call gets shredded, gets shut off. So it's, so you're actually, your, your green, as you get capacity problems, shrinks. So if I showed you the coverage without the site, so let's go to the map above it.
Map two.
Beautiful.
Map two.
Map two. So this is optimal coverage. If I actually took the temp site off the air, the actual coverage you would get would be much smaller than this because of capacity. It just shrinks up because I don't have enough capacity in that area. So this green really doesn't represent what would happen if I took that site completely off the system because all that traffic would try not to be served by the adjacent sites and they don't have enough capacity. So they're just going to shed everything and you get a big hole in the middle. RF, you've got, RF, you go, how come I, I got, I've got bars on my phone, but it's not working because they don't have the capacity on the system. So I hit the send button, nothing happens. Or if I'm on a, a Zoom call, pixelates and then gone. Or if I'm on a Zoom call, pixelates and then gone.
So the 170 feet helps with capacity?
Yes.
Not cover, well, coverage, but more capacity?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to ask him another question, but I'm going to move off topic a little bit. So I just want to make sure this is all answered before I change his direction.
Jen, we're good?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So they talked about the property that, at the time we filed the application, where it's municipal property. They just marked it out behind us. And that property is an additional .8 miles from where this one is proposed. So would that work from an RF standpoint?
No.
You got to tell them why.
Tell them why. You're pulling that site almost a mile. It's about?
Point eight.
Point eight. Point eight miles from where it is today. So now it's actually going to be more like a mile from where the temp site is. So you're pulling completely off-grid. And in fact, if we can go to the first slide, slide number two.
Which is map one.
Map one. And I believe what you're telling me is where I say the word, and that was the old name of this site, NJ 053 Sponcom Road. That was the old name of this site, but now we call it Randolph Road. Where the M is, is that the approximate location of the site? Right?
Yeah.
So that's over, that's a mile from the temp site. And that's completely out of pulling out. And you're not offloading the sites that are, that need to be offloaded. You're offloading a different sector of Howell Four. You're not offloading any of Lakewood, North Lakewood Relo. Can you slide that a little bit? You would be offloading the East Lakewood site. You would be pulling it away so it would have no impact on the downtown Lakewood site or the Lakewood Central site because you pulled it so far off-grid. This would actually be not a bad spot if we had enough traffic to justify another site. Maybe we would be back here. But for a placement, for a site where, you know, near Lakewood Farmingdale Road, Sponcom Road, this site is optimally located. That site is just not, it's not, it's not the same location for us. It's a completely different location for us.
Now I'm again done with David unless you all have questions.
Jen, you good with that? Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. My last witness. Brian, please state your name and your professional, your credentials and your professional experience.
Sure. Again, for the record, Brian Seidel. I have a Bachelor of Science in Landscape Architecture from Temple University. Been working in the field of land planning, land development consulting since 1997. Licensed New Jersey Professional Planner, certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners and licensed as a Landscape Architect in New Jersey as well as a few of the surrounding states.
Well, accept your credentials, sir.
Thanks.
Brian, can you please review to the, well, you know what? Let's start with the photo sims because those are always, that just tells the story.
Okay.
All right. So that was submitted with the plans and was the? Thank you, sir.
Were they submitted or no?
Yes, they were submitted with the application. Not with the original application, later submitted.
So the photo simulation?
Yes, the photo simulation.
Is that in the exhibit?
Yes, 823.
And we have paper copies in case the board wants them?
Yes.
Hey, Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
JC P and L, the power lines, on those trussels, what's the typical height of those?
I could not tell you off the top of my head because I'm not a electrical engineer or structural engineer, but that's certainly a question we could ask one of the applicant's professionals.
So, Mr. Chair, I think starting with the photo sims is the best way. And then I'll have him, you know, discuss the relief that I'm seeking and why it should be granted. So let's start with the pictures.
Sure. So the exhibit before you has a cover page identified as photographic inventory and simulations dated July 19th of 2022. The second page of that is a photographic key map. Basically what it is, there's a yellow star at the center of that page identified as the tower location. That is generally the location of the proposed tower. And then there's a series of arrows with numbers surrounding that. Those arrows and numbers represent photographs that are included within this package looking toward the proposed site and the proposed tower. What we generally do is we, for these simulations and the investigation, we go out to the project site, we drive around the area, obtain photographs from roadways, from publicly available areas such as roadways, parks, things of that nature to determine what the visual impact of the area is going to be. We've also identified with a black dashed line, a 1.5-mile radius. From my experience, that generally seems to be the limit as to where these sites, towers like this, are going to be potentially visible. So as we go through that and work through some of these numbered sites, the next page contains four views. Those are areas that we drove around, obtained photos, and, you know, there really wasn't any visual impact or the proposed tower would not be visible from those areas due to a variety of reasons, but mostly because of the mature vegetation surrounding those areas. As we get further into the packet for view six, for example, that's a view looking down the Conrail line. It's those open areas that generally become more visible and allow the tower to become a little bit more visible. It's also the areas that are containing the existing utility infrastructure from the electric substation, the railways, and generally those open areas. A lot of these areas, view seven, for example, from Miller Road, again, further away from the site. As you start doing this investigation, what you see is that the proposed tower generally blends in with all the other utility infrastructure in the landscape. View eight is a view from Randolph Road looking toward the tower. And basically what you see in the foreground is all the existing utility infrastructure from the substation. So the visual impact that we've really identified in these first set of photographs is really from those commercial areas and those major roadways directly adjacent to the site. But as you get further into the packet, into the additional views, those are some of the more residential areas. And again, the views and the impacts from those residential areas are very minimal because of the mature vegetation in the area.
You know, sir, when you talk about mature vegetation, that's something that's near and dear to all our hearts here in Howell Township, you know. So it's a good thing, not a bad thing.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay. Now, Brian, can you address the relief that we're requesting?
Sure. So generally, the highest levels of relief here are the conditional use variance. Important to note out that the communication tower is proposed is permitted in the underlying zoning district as a conditional use. But as a result of that, there are criterion conditions that we don't meet. So we are looking for a series of D3 variances to deviate from the standards. Also requesting a height variance for the increased height of the tower and then waivers for, I believe for sidewalks and for contribution to the tree fund. The D3 conditional use variances that I believe we're looking for are also the height of the tower to exceed the 150-foot maxima to be less than the 100, I'm sorry, 1,500-foot separation distance from existing monopole-style towers to the extent it may be required from the security fencing. The project engineer indicated the fencing would be required with a one-inch mesh as an anti-climbing device. But to the extent that's not acceptable, we would be requesting relief for that security fencing. Again, to the extent it's required from landscaping around the perimeter buffer, from the roadways here, while we're not providing any landscaping, there is significant vegetation that is going to be preserved on the site. And then there was another criteria regarding multiple uses on the site. Section 188, I believe, dash 61 has a requirement against multiple uses on the property. And since this would be a communications tower in addition to the substation, we, I believe, would require relief from that as well. Overall, you know, talking about the site itself, the location here, it is really a great location for this communications tower. The testimony that you heard from the previous applicants here, it's a large site, 38 acres. The proposed communications tower is going to be located off to the edge of the project site, but away from the substation area in an area of mature vegetation. The mature vegetation that's there does a great job of obscuring the views of the tower from the surrounding areas. It's also large enough to accommodate the setbacks that are required for a one-to-one setback for the communications tower. So with the 170-foot height that's being proposed, this site can accommodate the one-to-one setback of a minimum of 170 feet from those adjacent property lines. Also, just to point out, the site is located in the Special Economic Zone District. And looking at the land use maps in the area, well, this appears to be generally a commercial area to the west of the rail line. Commercial uses to the south, obviously the substation. The land use maps also show this area, again, to the west of the rail line, as being commercial in nature. So there's a substantial separation from any residential uses. Regarding the proofs that are required for the D3 variance or the conditional use variance, again, important to note that the use of the tower is permitted in the district and should be considered compatible use for that reason. The proofs that are required for a conditional use variance are lesser and that they are focused on the deviation itself. Since we are looking for additional relief regarding the number of uses and for the height, I will provide the justification for positive and negative criteria that are required for granting of the variance relief for a standard use variance as well. For that, and regarding the positive criteria, the site is particularly suited, is appropriate and can accommodate the proposed use. It's located on a property with the utility infrastructure, located central to the coverage gap and the radio frequency needs that were addressed by the radio frequency engineer, located in a commercial zoning district, surrounded by commercial uses, screened by mature vegetation, minimal impact to the residential areas. Visibility is focused on the commercial corridor while providing service to the surrounding residential areas. Variance will also advance the purpose of zoning and enhance the general welfare. You heard testimony that the carrier is licensed by the FCC and of course it found that carrying out the terms of those license justify and go toward the purpose of zoning, enhancing the general welfare. Regarding the height variance and the height of the structure that's being proposed, you heard testimony that this is the height that is needed to provide that additional coverage and capacity into the network. The application will advance the purpose of zoning, particularly purposes A, to guide the appropriate use of land, promoting the public health, safety and welfare. G, by providing space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses. And I, by providing a desirable visual environment with appropriate siting and quality design. Regarding the negative criteria, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, to passive use. There is no dust, owners, nose, I'm sorry, noise, fumes or vibration. Passive, low traffic will be made available for the co-location for additional wireless carriers. Will provide improved ordinary and emergency service to the area. Will be designed and constructed to industry standards. A minimum 170-foot setback will be provided to all property boundaries. And the only potential negative in, visual, I'm sorry, the only potential negative would really be the visual impact. And again, by locating this in a commercial area and away from the residential areas, I believe we've addressed that criteria with the preservation and the location within the mature vegetation and providing the monopole design, the galvanized structure that was described by the professional engineer. No substantial impairment to the zoning plan or the zoning ordinance. Again, the use is permitted in the district and compatible with these surrounding commercial areas. Regarding, generally in conclusion, the proposed location addresses the purposes that are cited in the town's wireless communications ordinance by encouraging towers in non-residential areas, protecting non-residential areas by minimizing visual impacts and avoiding impacts to adjacent properties with appropriate tower siting. Variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without substantial impairment to the zoning plan or zoning ordinance. I believe the criteria have been met and approval of the application is warranted.
And David, a couple of questions. Because this is a conditional use and we just don't meet the conditions, the board really needs to just look at the conditions that we don't meet because it's already been determined that the use is acceptable in the SED zone, correct?
Correct.
So when we look at the conditions we don't meet, they're within 1,500 of other towers. Melissa went through and explained that we really can't co-locate on any existing structures that are there, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the multiple use, from a planning perspective, would you just want a 30-whatever acre property just to have one use as a telecom tower? Is that a realistic use of any property?
It's realistically not. And these types of facilities are often combined with other uses. Existing communications towers with municipal buildings, with fire stations, it's not uncommon. And there are provisions in the ordinance that do allow for multiple uses on the lot such as shopping centers, multiple pad sites and things of that nature.
And the landscaping, we're really not complying with the landscaping portion of this, but isn't that because this is so well-forested that to go in and cut down trees to put up buffers and landscaping, it doesn't seem to the best interest or the best use?
That's correct. So technically, we may need relief from that because we're not providing landscaping. However, just because we're not providing it doesn't mean we're not preserving the vegetation that's already there on the property.
And let's talk about the sidewalk.
Can we just go back to the buffer for a minute?
Oh, sure.
So there is no doubt about it, you need it. So you said if we may need it, you need that relief. I agree. And we've routinely deferred to Shari on whether or not the existing landscaping is adequate, but it needs to be shown on the plans as a buffer, which would therefore preclude it from development by somebody else in the future. But yes, you need relief from section 188 dash 63A, which is the 50-foot buffer, and 63E, which shows like the different components that we require in the buffer, the fence, the birmingham, et cetera, at Shari's recommendation, correct?
Yes, I agree. Absolutely.
So that, I just want to make the record clear on that issue?
Sure. Absolutely.
And then the sidewalks, we want the sidewalks?
I mean, it's up to you guys based on where it's located, you know, but it isn't in South Howell. We do have a large.
We got to start somewhere.
Population of individuals that walk in this area. And to say they don't walk by this site is not true.
Well, no, but the problem is we're not, we're not a property.
Well, no, but the problem is, we're not, we're not a property owner developing the property or something, we're a small tenant that's just
You're here asking us for a variance.
So you can go back and negotiate that with
You're going to have to work that out.
Right. You're here asking for relief, and we routinely require sidewalk and a long commercial drive. You're going to have to work that out with JCPN.
Okay, so let's specifically talk about the sidewalk, so we know what we're talking about, okay? On Commercial Ave. I swiped your plans. So are you talking about sidewalks? So the whole length of Commercial Ave is 344 feet, is that what you're talking about in sidewalk?
You're obligated to provide sidewalk along the frontage on a public right-of-way. So whatever property, whatever property line, but Commercial Ave, that's where we're talking about sidewalk.
John, so we're good there? We want sidewalk, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
One question, is there any residuals on that road?
On the other side of the railroad, there's residential development, but that section of town has become very heavily walked.
No, I agree with you, Jen, on that. The only thing is, I'm just wondering, do we need the money in an area that's more important than this?
I mean, it's totally up to you guys whether you want to take the money or whether you want the sidewalk to go in. There's a very clear-cut calculation now in our ordinance
Oh, yeah.
That describes exactly how much that would be.
But I'm just wondering if it's used better somewhere else where they really need the sidewalks.
Well, my concern with the sidewalk, just to throw it in so we can have a two-way discussion, is it's a dead, it ends up in a dead-end street, and we'd have to take out vegetation, which is, you know, so I, you know, just to also throw that out there.
Well, while there, it is commercial, obviously, the roadway is Commercial Avenue, commercial in nature in this area. Again, the residential area is located further to the west, that would be the opposite side of Lakewood Road, not only the rail line.
So respectfully, we require sidewalk for everybody that comes here on Route 9, which is not residential, it's commercial. So again, I'm going to put it back to the board, it is a requirement of your application, and if they feel that the sidewalk needs to go in, you're going to have to figure out how to put it in. If they feel like the contribution would be more appropriate, that's totally up to them. But typically, given the uncertainty of Freehold Regional School District and all these other things that we've been dealing with all year
We need to put the sidewalks in, yes.
The sidewalks have become critically important.
I have a question, Jen, maybe you could help me out here.
Sure.
Where we're talking about putting sidewalks, is strictly going to be on Commercial Avenue?
I would say yes, I think that as you get towards Randolph Road, it's, that's so far away from what they're proposing, I think that would be a little above and beyond.
Okay, now, just one more question for some clarification. It looks like, and I kind of know the area, but it looks like Commercial Avenue actually isn't really accessible from Lakewood Farmingdale Road? Am I reading this correct, that in between there, there's a, I guess, a shutdown version of the Conrail Railroad?
There's a, at the, what, like, the northern end of it, Commercial, it bends to connect to Lakewood Farmingdale Road. It does connect.
So it's, it's an actual right-of-way, it's just not a improved street in the sense that it's not paved.
Can we look at view number 11 on the photo sims? Because it actually shows Commercial Road coming in, it's a gravel road, it ends in a dead end.
So that's what I'm asking, just for some clarity, is it like Mr. Chairman might have said earlier, would it be more beneficial, or it might have been Mr. Mertens, to have that contribution so that it's used somewhere the sidewalk might be more beneficial? Because it doesn't look like that, would that be trafficked much?
I honestly can't answer that.
Okay.
But it's up to you guys, if you feel that the money would be a better alternative, that's your call.
I appreciate your help, Jen.
What view are you asking us to look at?
Sure, view number 11.
It's up there on the screen.
No, that's not it, that shows a road.
One more up.
Go down, yeah, that's it.
Is that offshoot, that's Commercial Road?
Yes, and then
Along those trees where we're putting the sidewalk?
Yep.
The gravel road, yep.
Yeah.
That makes no sense.
That makes sense.
It's almost like the welding shop where it's dead-ended.
That kind of seems like we can throw a sidewalk somewhere where it's not really elevated.
Yeah, that's my point.
And we take down the trees, too.
Agreed.
Well, then the contribution is the alternative.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'd rather it goes somewhere where we can use them.
Jen?
Yes.
Makes sense?
It's up to you guys, 100%.
Okay.
Chairman, can I ask?
Yes.
Maybe speaking out of turn, but this photographic inventory and the visibility was presented when we saw the last tower that was put up, and I could see that tower from way further away. How many trees, you mentioned mature vegetation, how many trees in that area are 170 feet tall?
I would say 0%.
Thank you. Just to be clear, that tower's going to be visible, no matter what we picture.
And keep in mind that these photographs are taken when all the leaves are on the trees, so when the leaves are not on the trees, you are going to see it even clearer than in the summer months.
Doesn't matter, it's big.
Right. I just want to clear up a couple of things for the record, if you're fin, are you finished?
Yes.
You know, we heard a lot that this is a permitted use in the zone, it's a conditional use in the zone, it's appropriate in the zone if the applicant meets the conditions. Since they don't meet the conditions, that's why they're here. So yes, we've contemplated this use in this area, but we've contemplated it consistent with the conditions in the ordinance. We've heard a lot of testimony, and the D three provisions are basically how you would consider a bulk variance, like do the benefits outweigh the detriments, and there was testimony put on the record with respect to the height, with respect to evaluating other potential opportunities within 1,500 feet. There was testimony earlier about the size of the compound and the height of the equipment in the compound. Those are all conditions of the conditional use. The multiple principal uses on a single lot, that's a full-on D1 variance, that's not part of the conditions. That goes back to, is the site particularly suited, and does the positive, does it advance the goals of zoning, and then is there substantial detriment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance? And there was testimony with respect to that, I just didn't think it was very clear which relief was being requested for what. So I just wanted to clarify the record and make sure that we're aware of it. In addition, we talked about the bulk relief for the perimeter buffer and then the waiver associated with the sidewalk. That is what they're asking for. So at the end of the day, I think you guys are going to have to determine whether or not the testimony with respect to the differential and the coverage and the capacity to justify going from the 150 to the 170 was enough for you to grant a height relief of 20 feet over what we permit. But I think they provided all the information that they possibly could provide on the subject matter, I don't think there's anything additional that we are looking for in terms of the variance relief.
The only, yeah, the only question that I would have, and I think it was goes to what Mr. Say was questioning of me, is, you know, obviously, it's on a existing, it's being proposed on an existing JCPN substation site, so there are towers of different types and things on that property. As far as the character of the neighborhood and that property, do we know what the tallest existing pole is on that site versus what's proposed?
I think that somebody testified earlier that the pole on the JCPN pole was 200 feet high.
Okay.
I think that one of your prior witnesses testified to that.
Melissa testified that it was 200.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that pole's not lighted?
No. Oh, is it lighted? Oh, it is lighted.
It is lighted.
But the FAA, right, but the FAA found that our pole did not have to be lit. Now, we have
What's the total height limit that the FAA, where the threshold is, whether it's lit or not lit?
Generally, it's 200 feet or above, and that varies with airports and things like that, but generally, it's 200 feet, and that's a 200-foot tower, so it would make sense.
Okay. Well, I think we should open this up to public. All right, do we have a motion to open this up to public?
Motion to open.
We have a motion to open public, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aileen?
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public who have any questions or comments regarding this application. If you have any questions or comments, please step up to the podium.
Okay, not seeing any?
Get up there.
Okay, Jose, you want to say something?
Yep.
No, okay. Can I have a motion to close to public, please?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Stanton and Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're close to public, then, Aileen.
Could I do a quick closing before you deliberate? Okay, so you've gotten a lot of testimony tonight, and it, the property, and we're replacing a telecommunications pole, is actually perfect. It's JCPN, there are already poles there and towers, and yes, the pictures are in with the greenery and the leaves on, because that's when we filed the application, and that's when the pictures were taken, and we're not saying you're not going to be able to see the top part of a 200 pole, no one would ever say that. But it, when you looked at the photo sims, it blended in. When your ordinance was done, matter of fact, even two years ago, oh, I guess it'd be more like three and a half years ago with COVID, no one really understood telecommunications and how it would start. I don't want to date myself, but I represented these carriers when they first started. And back then, it was just, everybody used telephones, you know, you used your phone for a phone, and that was it. And then people started using it more frequently, they started bringing it in the home. My young adult children no longer have landlines, everybody uses their phone as their major communication. So saying that, you know, you have an ordinance to 150 feet, yes, that's great, that's very respectful, but there are instances like this, when you have capacity issues, especially after COVID, no one anticipated that, no one could possibly think that you would need 170-foot poles for one of the major carriers that has the majority of all services to deal with capacity issues, you just didn't think it. As was clearly stated, it will look green, and you can stand there and make a call at 150, but when everyone is using it during major parts of the day, and people are working from home, and children are at school, you can't, the system can't handle it. So the ordinance and the telecom and everything, at times, they're at odds because it develops so quickly and it changes so quickly, and this is one of those times. And Verizon has proven that they need the site. I think that a very good explanation, actually, I've never seen them up pointing behind a board before, but I thought David did a great job explaining why. So I ask that you please vote to approve our application, we will do everything that you require, we'll revise the plans, we'll do the vinyl fence with the small holes in it, and everything that you've asked us to do. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, so summation is all done, so it's on us, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
Back to you.
Okay. So we want the waiver to the sidewalks, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, because I just think at that end road like this, I'd rather see it on a road that's going to be, it's going to benefit.
Where it's actually going to get used, yeah.
What does that mean if we waive it? Does that mean they have
They're going to contribute to the sidewalk fund.
Which I think Jen spoke to, there's a very clear algorithm or calculation for that, right?
Yes, and they would work it out, okay.
And also, no waiver to the tree fund.
They needed formally request a waiver to pay into the tree fund.
They're going to, yes, and to the tree fund. Okay, sidewalk and tree. And then, there's the height. You know, Mr. Stern gave us a very passionate explanation on, you know, what has taken place and the cows that are in place, and, you know, I know we're helping our fellow Ocean County Lakewood community as well, because it's a dual purpose, right? So, you know, I don't, I don't
I agree, capacity is definitely an issue.
It is, right?
100%.
So the fact that it's a co-located on this site, and you already have a pole that's 200 feet, and it's got a light on it, this 170, maybe we can, might find a way to get there, I would think.
Paul, can I ask another question, or are we past?
Go ahead, what would you like to?
It might require a little more pointing at the board, though, I'm sorry, but I've just been looking at some things, and I was just curious, you know, it says here on your sheet anyway, you know, that you have to, unless the applicant demonstrates reasonable satisfaction to the board, that there is no other place to put the tower to get this through, so I'm just thinking of every possible scenario here. I was just looking on Google Maps at some of these white areas that are going to be covered by putting in this new pole, and a lot of them are undeveloped, though. You know, one of the main points was the capacity, and that the existing capacity, once this cow goes away, is going to spike, and, you know, by shading all these areas green and increasing that capacity in those areas, that issue's going to go away, but if they're already, if the majority of them are only undeveloped, there's only really one spot that's local right along the Lakewood and Howell border. Was there another, was there, did you look at existing businesses, like taller, three- and four-story buildings, to put antennas on top of them, maybe say along like East County Line Road or Kennedy Boulevard, right on the Lakewood side? Because if you look at it, there's really just one neighborhood right there on the border there, within these white areas that are being covered by this additional, this cell tower. And again, it was going back to what I was saying before about staging it, if it's an existing capacity issue, let's really drill down to where the existing capacity issue is, because if you look at, I don't know if you could throw this back up there, again, the green sheet with, without the cow site?
John's got it.
The one before it works, yeah, there. So if you look at, if you look at Google Maps, basically, all this is undeveloped here. This is all, there's some houses along the property here and along the outskirts, but this is all, this is all forested area, and so is this here. This all in here is just open land. The only place really that there is actual development is right along the border here, and I'm saying, you know, that's great, we're getting all this coverage, but there's nothing there right now, so what, is there any avenue along one of these roads here to put it on top of a higher-story building just to kind of capture this so we don't have to put a taller monopole in? And again, I'm just, I'm not trying to be a pain, I'm just trying to go through every possible scenario to make sure that we've covered, you know, you vetted every possible scenario.
David's going to go ahead and discuss the height and why he needs it for capacity and coming up. But just for the record, so you know, under your ordinance, it requires, it asks about existing structures, which we do. Under federal law, we don't have to go lot by lot if we're building a tower, because honestly, a tower can probably go 1,000 feet either way, just so that, just so that the record's clear.
Leave it, leave it.
It's very different than looking at existing towers, because we did have to rule out the existing towers, we don't have to rule out every piece of property, and I just want that on the record, but David's going to explain some of that, how it's not going to work anymore.
I'm going to try not to blind Mr. Ryan.
Oh.
So it's just, there you go, all right. So the area, it was working, there you go, so the area that was just
Or maybe you are going to go back there.
All right, so the area we just mentioned was this area in here. And what I, what I, what I talked about before is the green area is just the RF coverage. That's where I have sufficient RF coverage for in-building uses in that area, okay? That's what that represents, that's the Verizon Wireless sufficient coverage. I have, so when the network is nice and quiet, grid is asleep, that's my significant, that's my significant gap in coverage. The much more dominant part of this gap is the capacity issues, and those capacity issues are all in the green areas, it's all the green areas.
Could you, could you hold on until the chairman comes back, because he just left the dais?
Absolutely.
We don't want to
Just go back there.
Go back there?
Just go back there.
You're leaving too?
He's got his own personality.
Oh.
I like it better when you're back there.
I think
Fingers getting tired. They just like that, they wait for the chair. Go ahead, wander back there.
Oh, yeah, pointy-dive.
Mr. Ryan caused it to die.
I did. Secondary when I see red dots pointed at me from afar.
It's not a sniper, Mike, it's not a sniper.
Okay, the chairman has returned, so we're continuing.
Are you still frozen? Hold on one second, the court reporter's machine froze. So let's hold on one sec.
What's that?
Okay, you good?
I'm sitting under it, so.
That's okay, that's all right.
We're waiting for you.
You left. I had to go. I couldn't have taken another.
Well, you gotta go.
You gotta go, okay.
Okay.
We're all up and, we're waiting for the court. What is that voice box there?
Oh, okay, good.
Okay, we can continue.
All right, so the question is, as we read the question, is if all these areas are my problem areas, why don't I just do something in there or where the capacity is here? So the answer to the question is, my capacity issues are all of these sites. So each of these sites, North Lakewood Relo, Lakewood Downtown Site, Lakewood Center Site, East Lakewood Site, the Howell Four Site, all those sites have got capacity issues. When we put the, put the TEM cell in there, the capacity issues fired it down. And the traffic all got absorbed here, so that the blocking stopped, and I had it. So it's not just these areas, it's everything. These areas are just, it's just coverage. So like I said, in the middle of the night, the system's quiet, I don't have adequate service here. In the middle of the day, and, and as I said, this is in-building, so if you're walking up and down a Rosa Hill, you have coverage, because you're walking outside. Different, different than we've, than this network. If I was just showing you outside, walk-around coverage, there's a lot more green on this map than I'm showing right now. This is in-building. So, but the capacity issues are everywhere. So the capacity issues are here. So this Howell Four Site was covering all the way down into here to pick up coverage. It's covering out towards, towards Route 9 and these residential areas. So it was providing the coverage around here. So with, when this, when this, when the pandemic hit, this site was over capacity. The North Lakewood Site, or its predecessor on the power tower over here on the Lakewood Side, was out of capacity. The Lakewood Downtown Site was out of capacity. The Lakewood Center Site was out of capacity. And the East Lakewood Site, on the water tank over here, they were all out of capacity. So if I take this out, all the sites all shrink back, all have capacity issues throughout the coverage area of that capacity. It's not just the white areas, the green areas get affected. The white areas really have just coverage, and you only see that in the middle of the night when you've got no, no capacity issues out there. It's all become a network infrastructure nightmare, huh? Yes, I agree. You know, they're I guess they're being asked to remove the cow from the JCPL site in Lakewood, right?
Yes.
You know, so this is to replace that. Maybe we can move that cow up into Howell sometime in the future, eh, and give us more capacity. All right, so
What was the timeframe on that? Was that ever brought up?
What, on the cow?
When they had to move it back.
Oh, question.
Soon as we can get a new site built, we were supposed to be down already. And it's just taking, by the time we go through zoning and get all the documents and everything, they would like us to be gone already. We're not until we can, after, if we get an approval, hopefully we will, we still have to build it. So we're, we're unwanted already.
Well, you're not unwanted here in Howell, so. So, you know, what's the pleasure of the board here? You know, you've heard Go ahead.
Question, he's reading it.
All right.
Jen, on your report, where it says the D6 height variance, the application requires a D6 use variance to permit a height of principal structure which exceeds by 10 feet or 10% of maximum height permitted in the district. So are we saying that's above 165?
So you're allowed to have 150, 10% would be 165. 165 and 1 inch is more than the 10%.
Right, so
But it's 10 feet, really, so 15 feet is, it's 10 feet or 10%. So once you hit 160, then it would be a D6 variance from there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Did she say 160 or 165?
Once, it's 10 feet or 10%. So here, 10% is 15 feet, so it'll be 10 feet, so 150 plus 10 is 160.
So it's the lesser, lesser of the two.
Careful with the lesser of the two.
Lesser of the two, got it, okay. So are we looking at trying to employ the lesser of the two, or?
We would just, yeah, I mean, it's, it's 10 feet. If I'm allowed to give opinion?
Go ahead.
It's 10 feet, it's not that, it's, by giving them 170 feet, we're enabling them to meet the requirements of what they say they need. It's only an additional 10 feet, 20 feet. They're putting up, the ordinance allows them to put up a huge pole on this site that's not visually pleasing anyway. So it's not going to be that much more of a detriment to put an additional 10 or 15.
It's 20, let's, guys, we're allowed 150. Once you're above 160, it's a use variance. If you're below 160, it's still a variance, it's just a bulk variance. So 150 is what's allowed, is what's allowed.
Even if it's a 150-foot pole, which it is on Route 9, it's still a big, very visible pole. So 170 feet is still a very big, visible pole. And that site has a lot of
Tall structure.
Tall structures, it's not a pleasingly, it's not a visually pleasing site, it's a commercial site, and it serves a very useful purpose.
I agree, I was already at 200 feet, and this is actually smaller.
Yes. Okay, so then what's the pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the variances as we, the conditional use variance, the use variance, the bulk variance, and the preliminary and final major site plan approval with all of the conditions that our professionals have stipulated. The various conditions, hopefully I'm saying that right. And I'm, board members, am I missing anything here?
You're talking about the contributions to the tree fund, contributions to the sidewalk fund, right?
Correct.
You're also, your motion is to approve the 170-foot height, is that it?
Correct.
Okay, and then the security fencing and caging and?
I think that anti-climbing is, meets the intent of that section of the ordinance.
Okay, so
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve for Mr. Cantor.
I'm going to second that. I think the presentation by your professionals was great because I think we had a lot of questions, and I think they were answered. I think Mr. Rubell made some good arguments, and I appreciate what you've said because it made me think a little bit. But Mr. Stern made some good answers to my questions, so I'm going to second the motion for approval.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for approval. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Before I say yes or nay, you know, when the cow comes down, you know, if you need the cow here in Howell, you know, bring it on, okay? So with that, yes.
Thank you all so much for your time, we really appreciate it.
Can we have a motion to adjourn? I think next meeting is the 18th?
Next Monday night.
Next Monday, Paul.
Okay.
One week.
How many on the agenda?
Three.
Three, three applications.
Two, I believe, are just both variance.
Okay, all right. So then I'll see everybody next Monday then, right?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.